Can you please rise and join me in saying applause?
Right.
Bye.
I know, yeah.
Okay.
My apologies, this is by the United States of America and to your public for which fans, one nation under God, in whose love we believe, and just as well.
It's shifting. That's okay.
Good thing you're wearing red.
That's right. Did everybody have a chance to review the meeting minutes from the October meeting? Yes. Do you need a blue pen? We had a pen. Doesn't matter on this one. Does anyone have any questions or corrections on the minutes to be made? If not, do we hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion approved.
And a motion with second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. And the fund report. I think if anyone could take a moment to review that. Josh, was there anything that we should be looking at specifically?
No. This fund report y'all have includes the reductions we did last month.
And if no one has any questions or comments or corrections, we have a motion to approve.
Make the motion approved.
And a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just moving on to the payment of the bills. And why didn't you say anything that looks like you had any questions? Did anyone have any questions or comments?
No.
If there are any real questions or comments, do we have a motion to approve?
Make the motion in favor of those. Second then.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Beautiful. Do you have any correspondence? Wonderful. We'll go to MS4 then. Hi Kate.
Hi. For the month of October, they have a total of 203 onsite reviews and that's for applications, evaluations, and complaint inspections.
Okay.
On the marketing side, as of today, they have eight uploaded videos. They've had a total of 130,000 views, 102 Facebook likes, and 1,018 YouTube subscribers. No negative comments and we've even gone outside into other states in the surrounding area. People are really, they think the videos that they do are fun.
Okay.
So, and they're just have a little show and tell. This will be free. Rick's, I think, going to be dropping some off these soon.
Okay.
Basically what it is, is it's a garbage can for your grease.
Oh.
Get this off, which is very useful.
That is great.
They're called Trap the Grease. And there's two little bags inside.
Mm-hmm.
So it's basically a garbage bag you put in here and pour the grease in. Full, when it's full, you just seal it up.
Can you show the camera?
Sure.
Thanks. So you seal it up?
And then throw it in the trash instead of down the drain.
And then that box just holds the bags?
Yeah, yeah. Like a little trash can.
Nice.
So that would be free to hand out to anybody.
More than you get, you've got little bags.
Um, I think Rick's got that too. We kind of ran out of time a little bit as far as, there were a couple other things in regards to, I don't want to talk too much about this because I really don't know that much at this point, but doing a study on the Shrews ditch, which is a long boy ballpark, fixing that up, it's going to, because they're going to run into a wet, it goes right alongside wetlands. So we were discussing what funds were going to be needed. We just been waiting for proposal. Once I get back, I'll get that up with a little detail on it because we just had the first discussion this afternoon of it.
Okay. Do you know how many of the grease, grease trap?
Yeah, grease trap.
How many of those that we're going to have?
Um, no. I, you know, that they decided, there was some debate about whether to sell them or for a given way and they decided, it's like $5 each, so they just decided to do it for free. And they're going to hook up with their website and Facebook page, the company that produces these, so that our program pop up on it.
Okay, great.
So, I'm going to just leave this one here.
Thank you.
Josh Lee.
Okay.
That's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Kate?
I just did some update from, from Lincoln up the ramp stuff for the plants and whatnot.
Uh, no. I have some questions. Yeah, that's, yeah. The tiny lake one won't start to make sure that I manage.
Okay.
But I can certainly send an email and ask it what to say.
We will have some here. Yeah, we mentioned.
Thank you. Moving on to the town attorney next. Mr. Herbach.
Good evening. Got a busy month. I sent letters to 136 South Sarah Joe, Mr. D.C. San Diego regarding his ducks, indicating that ducks have never been permitted in the town and that the chicken ordinance only permits chickens. So huge advice, his exception was not approved.
Okay.
So I sent a letter to that effect. Sent a letter to Adam and Amanda Boyd-Sinsky about registering their dogs. The only issue was the marshal at one time found the dogs at the dog park and they didn't, they weren't registered at that time. So we just sent a letter reminding him to do that. I reviewed the information the engineer gave us on the Judge property on Martin Drive. And my advice, I think, to the president was that damage is on our easement and it was there beforehand.
Oh.
So the reality is, why should we pay to get it fixed? So I don't know if you talked to Mr. Judge or not, Jennifer?
I have not. I thought we were sending a letter.
Um, I can send a letter.
Okay.
If you want me to.
Please.
I reviewed a variance that was submitted by homeowner on Wellness, Mrs. Money, by Mr. Kesselman, who apparently is assisting her, but it was legally not sufficient. Didn't have legal descriptions with it, didn't have the amended plot, didn't, and he would have to amend the zoning ordinance as well as the variance. So none of those things were complied with. I advised him in a letter to that effect. Mr. Kesselman said that he was, in fact, getting the necessary documents prepared by an engineer, I think it was Mr. Doyle. But he wouldn't, if they're going to Florida, he would re-submit it in probably the spring.
Okay, so we won't hear anything more on that for quite a while then?
No.
Okay.
511 Johnson Road, this is the dead tree issue. Send letter to Mrs. Missick regarding removal of the dead tree. She responded with an arborist report that indicated the tree was not dead, that it may fall, but not in the near future, but recommended that the tree be inspected on a yearly basis, one or two-year basis. So based on that, I sent a copy of that letter to Mrs. Schultz and a copy of the arborist. Neighbor complaining indicated that there's nothing for the town is going to do since we have an arborist that says the tree isn't dead. Property 2601 Greenwood, this is the Dave Bannell property. He's deceased. Property was inherited, apparently through a trust by a Tozinski, Colby Tozinski, and there's a guardian appointed for that person. I sent a letter to the guardian indicating the property was not compliant with their zoning ordinance and there was a lot of brush and waste on the property. I haven't heard anything from them, but I have to look back at the property to see if they've taken any action and I'll do that. 122 Sarah Joe, Lori and Pat Hines regarding cat violation. They, our ordinance permits up to three in a residential and apparently they have nine to 12, different counts. But in any way, she provided a letter to me from her veterinarian saying that the cats were all well behaved and all vaccinated. And then she additionally provided a letter from Dr. Cora saying they were anxiety cats and good therapy for her. Of course, Dr. Cora's an MD and not a psychiatrist, so I responded in a letter to her indicating that, that our ordinance is for three quick cats and I would think that would be appropriate for an anxiety and therapy. So she needs to reduce her cat population. If we get any more neighbor complaints, we'll enforce the ordinance.
Okay. Still going? This has been a busy month. Wow.
Property 1920 9 East Cool Spring, this is the Michael Howard Genish property. I've given Claudia a number of weeks to clean up the property. It's a road through the church parking lot where you now can see through the trees and see the garbage that's over in that property. So I'm going to get estimates to have it cleaned up and we'll send a crew in there. We'll probably initially have to pay for it. There is a judge's order that she pays for the cleanup as well as pays $2,500 per day for every violation.
Wow.
So I'm not sure we'll enforce that part, but we'll, we'll make sure it's cleaned up and that she pays for it. We have a pending case against Alan Murray. He's on risky, at North Risky. This is parking vehicles in the front yard. Since the court hearing, he has complied. Every time I've been by the house, he's had his vehicles parked on the driveway and he said he would continue to do that. My suggestion is that I just dismiss that case. I continued to doubt, so we dismiss it and then we, we just review it again.
Okay.
I reviewed, revised insurance settlement with, regarding the 2019 charger with Martin and Josh Lahren. Appeared appropriate and I think we came up with a resolution on that.
Yeah, we're close.
Okay. I'm now reviewing the Plunk property, 308 H Moore Drive. We need to get some pictures of the backyard, but we're probably going to be sending letters to them about cleaning it up. Also sent a letter to Evergreen Furniture. Again, what they do is they take old furniture and they put it in back of their building and then it sits there until they get somebody to come in and dispose of it.
Do they not have a dumpster for that?
They don't have a dumpster and they, they get enough back there where I think if they put up some kind of fenced enclosure, that you couldn't see it from anywhere but right in there, it probably would be sufficient for, until they get rid of it. They said they'd do it on a monthly basis rather than a weekly basis, but I don't, some of it's been there longer than that, I think.
Yeah, they do have a dumpster and they're guys, occasionally when they have time to break some of that furniture down, they put it in the dumpster, but it, you know, break down mattresses, things like that.
I'll work with them on trying to get a resolution.
That would be good.
That's going to be an ongoing problem. Currently, we're revising the employee manual, so I'd like you all to look at that. If there's any revisions you think we ought to make in the employee manual. One of the things Marshall and I talked about is revising the vacation days area for his department because they're doing 12-hour shifts, not eight-hour shifts, as the manual says. So we need to look at that and basically see if we can improve it. Couple other things we're going to change. One is, I think it's on our calendar, night mileage.
Mm-hmm.
Which we can do orally tonight and then I can change that in the employee manual.
Okay.
The cats at Camp Gun Shop. Been there three times. The problem that I have is to be a public nuisance. Remember, we have an ordinance that says you can only have three cats in a residential area. We have no regulations regarding a business area. So unless it meets the criteria of being a public nuisance, it doesn't, it doesn't qualify. The cats are not owned by Kemp. She said she doesn't own them. She just feeds them because she feels sorry for them. Dave Base says they're a great asset to his hundred cars that are out there because they keep rodents out of his cars and catch all the mice. So yeah, he feeds them too. So the reality of it is, I haven't seen any cats over on Mr. Teeter's property when I was there. I have a hard time putting it into classification of a public nuisance. The other thing I found out is nobody wants feral cats.
No.
They're not adoptable by anybody. I did find one person, it's a civilian, that said he would, he would catch them at $75 apiece and euthanize them. But I don't know if we want to go that far. So it's, it's a question at this point, I guess, of how bad a nuisance it really is. I, I don't, when I was over there, I don't smell anything. You know, I didn't have a problem with that, so I don't know. Marshall's been there too.
Yeah, I try to stay clear of cats. Allergies and, don't trust them.
We'll keep working on that.
Okay.
And then, what we did to propose ordinance for capital asset policies. That's all I have.
Wow. Okay. That was a meeting in itself. Okay, so for the, for the cats with Mr. Teeters in the gun shop, do you want to just kind of keep monitoring the situation? Is that what your recommendation is or?
Yeah, I really don't know what the answer to that is. I mean, unless the town wants to come up with money to, you know, euthanize the cats, I don't know what any other resolution is.
I guess the only other...
How many cats are there? What about friendly trapping them and taking them?
Wow.
Where?
Ten. Out in the woods.
She'll come across and she keeps them.
I mean, they'll survive. They're wild cats.
Yeah, but you don't give somebody else a problem.
Well, I guess here's my question. If he, if she, if they stop feeding them, they will find another food source. So maybe we ask that, I mean, I hate to do that, but I, maybe we ask them to stop feeding the cats.
Take them out to somewhere else in the woods or something, some far off.
But if you do that, they'll still come back. They'll still find their way back.
Would be so much as proud of them like that. Take them out of the woods.
They, they still find their way back home, their cats.
We hate.
Okay, that was on Roger.
I don't stop.
All I'm saying is maybe we need to find another solution. They, they just stop feeding the cats.
There's that spot on 94 that flooded last year. There's a lot of law out there.
The only, the only solution I can come up with is that they stop feeding them.
Stop feeding. That's it.
Maybe we ask her to stop. You know, I hate to do that, but the cats will go and find food elsewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Mr. Base says they're a help to him. He likes them.
No, I'm sure that they find lots of food back there in that area.
Yeah.
And shelter, yes.
He feeds them too though.
Well.
So he says in the wintertime, he said he feels sorry for them, so.
Okay.
I will make that suggestion to him.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments this evening?
Why did they say no to the ducks? He said his neighbors didn't mind them. Wasn't it like, two ducks?
Here's the problem. Once you start, once you start changing it to a duck, duck makes noise, okay? And they do.
Yeah.
Chickens don't. Typically hens don't. So that's why we allow hens in residential areas. But if you open it up to ducks, then you'll have other fowl that you'll have to let in.
You'll have turkeys and geese and...
Yeah, you have the same argument.
Yeah.
So do we have an ordinance against fowl or no?
We do against, yes, all fowl except chickens.
Oh, we do.
We do.
In fact, yeah, we didn't have chickens until recently.
Right. Chickens are just, the urban chickens were just, correct.
Yeah, they have, you can't be free range.
So, okay.
Kind of on the feral cat thing too.
Yes. If you could, if you could state your name and your address, please.
Jack G., 2003 Wellness Road. I've worked in veterinary medicine for pretty much my whole life. Usually when we talk about feral cats, there's no immediate getting rid of them. It's thinking long-term. So it's spay neutering and then marking them that they've been spayed and neutered so the population doesn't count. I don't think that taking food away from them is going to cause them to go away is my short answer. I think this might be the same thing. So really all we, if we wanted to look at it and not get ridiculed for euthanizing potentially healthy animals, it's usually trap them.
Trap and release.
Spay neuter them or neuter all of them because that's cheaper so they can't reproduce and then reintroduce back. That's usually good.
We did trap them before and we did neuter 22 of them. And Kemp's Gun Shop donated $1,000 to the facility that neutered them. So that was, you know, what we thought.
That's already happened, hasn't it?
Yeah.
Yes. So, so that part's been taken care of.
Yeah.
Yeah. Short of, short of that, there's not a lot we can do there.
See, one, two, three, four.
No, thank you.
We have five of them coming.
I think Cal Packard's a cat.
That's what I heard. That's what I heard.
My dogs.
Okay, moving on to Mr. Doyle this evening. Don't worry.
I have paid the file pay requests from Reeve Riley on paving projects this year. I noticed in the minutes that referred, I believe, if we're talking about the same things, Jocelyn, Walsh and Kelly.
Oh.
This is Reeve Riley's request for pay.
Yeah, I didn't get it.
Yeah, neither.
I have a pay request in the amount of $312,567.37. That's 10% less than the total project at this point. And I didn't have a request for the retainer.
Oh, is that?
In the amount of $34,729.71 for a total of $347,297.8, which is $17,603.92 less than the bid.
That's great.
Adjustment of quantity.
Yeah, that's good.
And the non-payment of the video tape, Martin Drive, which they did not do correctly, so we took that out of the, so we, I believe we need a...
So do we have a motion to approve payment of Reeve Riley in the amount of $312,567.37? I can't even read it tonight, but it's on the paper in front of you.
Yeah, I'm making motion to pay Reeve Riley, $347.297.8 for the work they done to street because...
$312,567.37.
That's the, that's the initial.
That's the amount due.
You've got to add them all together.
We're paying even the retainer.
Yeah, we have to pay the retainer too, that's what I had.
I thought we had to pay that because it's less than 10%.
Correct.
We're paying $347.
Plus the $34,000.
So amount due in total would be that.
Yeah.
Yeah, $347.297.08, am I right?
Yep. You're right.
Correct. And that you should also include in your motion, acceptance of the project as completed.
And, all right, I'll start over. Make a motion to pay Reeve and Riley for their services of the road repair and the retainage of $347,297.8 and to, what'd you say you want to?
Accept the project.
Accept the project as, as completed.
Do we have a second?
Second then.
All in favor?
Aye. Just keep in mind that the bulk of that will be paid through the grant money that we received from the nut.
Wonderful.
And the rest will be paid out of LRS, NPH, major moves, and we're voting.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Wow.
Again, with the roads, we've been in contact with asphalt restoration services, basically under the drive South Bend. They did the repairs on Oriole and there was some people requesting that the road be repaired. They did that and they also did some repairs on Wellness Road. These are some of the bad locat, bad spots to get us over the winter. I don't know what the cost of that is. That is...
$5,600.
Well, that was the estimate. It's a, it's a unit price.
This is the invoice, right?
It is.
This is actually the invoice that I'm looking at.
They sent that to Jeff today.
Uh, I...
If you want to review it.
Okay, I, I reviewed it, but a copy of it there. I don't believe the quantities are justified that. Quantities of work do not justify that.
That amount?
That amount.
So let's hold off until you can review it.
It should be higher or less?
I think it's lower.
Lower, okay. Well, you can keep that copy.
Okay.
From an email.
All right. Let's see what else I got. There was a request, I didn't, from the marshal regarding the street light at Menke Road and Highway 35. I took a look at that area.
That wasn't from me. That was from a resident.
Okay.
And my question was, that's the intersection of technically Michigan Cities. Should she go through Michigan City or us?
That's us.
It is us, okay. Because it is in the town limits?
Yes, sir.
Because they're the ones that did that whole project out there and...
Well, they, that half of Michigan Boulevard, I'll say, is, that's the town limits, so anything south of the, on the half, south side of that is Michigan City. I do believe it needs a light there. There's a couple of Nipco poles that they can put a light on.
Okay. And would you be contacting Nipco about that or should we, should we have Jeff do that?
Or Jeff?
Jeff could do that.
Yes.
We talked to them about that. We'll slap one of those new LEDs up there and see how it is.
Yeah. I'll follow up with the resident, just like we discussed, and then we'll look into it further.
Thank you, Steve.
And I did have the, so I drove down Pine Tree Drive South. The light at the corner, Pine Tree and 20, that shines back on the, the plaza itself needs to be repositioned because it's shining basically right down Pine Tree. Also makes it difficult to see at that location.
Dr. Cora.
Yeah. So I think that that, probably just a matter of determining the fixture, but...
I think this has been discussed before. Really the problem is, is when you turn it, then you've got to face it down 20 because it's at such a weird angle. It's, 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 but it's, it sits in the corner and it's trying to catch both sides of the building and so as you're coming down Pine Tree, John says you see the light, but if you turn, if they turn it that way, I'm just concerned that coming down 20, you're going to see it just as bad.
It's going to be blinding.
As well, which isn't our problem, but driving eastbound in the parking lot, you're going to get blinded.
So they really need to just position maybe down and sort out?
Yeah. Probably down. I hit that every morning.
I don't have access for it. And it, to me, it's just a bad spot.
Yeah. You want to talk to Dr. Cora about the danger to the traffic here?
You want me to?
Yeah. You're the marshal, right?
I'll tell her.
Everybody listens to you.
Just meet me there at 5:30 tomorrow, Friday morning.
He'll be there. I'm sure.
The safety issue.
And then John, I see that we have a bill from you as well?
Yes, that's for our services, project administration and inspection on the paving program.
Okay. So that one is in the amount of $20,423. We need a motion to approve that one as well. We have a motion to pay Mr. Doyle in the amount of $20,423 for the 2019 street improvement program. Next one, Sharon. It should be in the back of that package. So I need, I need a motion to... So I need a, I need a motion to approve payment for Mr. Doyle.
I'll make a motion to pay John for his services on the street projects of 2019. Since I know anyone making motions today.
And a second today, please?
One second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Thank you.
What are you doing on going to January? You guys are in trouble.
We're taking a shot.
No one's gonna make a motion.
All right.
One other thing, if we are going to apply for the grant money, the next draw, I guess, is, Jocelyn knows the dates better, the next draw for the.
I believe it's in January. I don't know the exact opening, but I need to submit the new LTAP payment asset management plan. Then once that's approved, then we're.
Then we can go forward. Okay.
I need to get that.
So you already have basically the streets that you would suggest.
That we're going to work on. But my question is, do you want me to begin to prepare plans and so forth for those streets? For the, the, yeah.
Did we do that already?
You gotta figure your plan, right?
Well, we have gone through all that, but this would actually be the plans for the construction of the.
And we have to submit that with the grant application, correct?
The ones that we submitted before and got denied? That those plans wouldn't work again to resubmit in January?
Well, my understanding is they turned it down because they're not complete enough.
Because we didn't provide detailed estimates.
Okay, so if we could take those same streets maybe and just do the detailed estimates?
All right, that's fine.
Save a little money.
Did they give us exact, tell us exactly, is it written down what they, why they rejected us?
I feel that we did submit detailed estimates because John and I have together done this now, what, four times and won the grant twice and it's the same format.
It's just be a different person who's reading.
It's difficult to make these detailed.
It is.
Estimates. If you don't have the plans, which comes first here.
So you need to do both.
You can, you can guesstimate the quantities and things of that nature, but if they're actually looking for details, then you need to have a pretty good idea of what, say, the drainage adjustments you're going to have to make and things of that nature.
Uh huh.
In the past, we've just said, you know, drainage, $10,000 or $15,000. You don't seem to like that.
So if you do the specific plans for them, then even if we would get denied, you could still use those again on a separate project. So that would already be, that work would already be done.
For those particular streets.
Right.
I'm sorry, I thought we already did that, but you're saying now.
If that's what you feel that we need to do?
Well, I think you have to. What we've given them throughout the, for this five-year programs and so forth, is basically we've assigned a number, the condition of the street. That determines what year we propose to do it in, the width, the length, rough estimate of fact, the amount of asphalt it's gonna take or what you're going to do with the street. That doesn't seem to, we've done that for Army Street and Town. Doesn't seem to satisfy them. They want to know the exact, I'll say, an exact amount of asphalt, how much pipe you're gonna put in the ground, what size, et cetera, et cetera. In order to do that, you've gotta prepare the plans.
Okay, figured out. So you'll do the plans.
Do we need a motion for that or?
Would you like to make a motion that we have Mr. Doyle do the plans?
No, I'll let you guys do that.
Thanks, Jeff.
I'll let you around when you do it. So you guys can do that. Oh boy, do you know, do you know, did they have to have the exact, which ones he's doing, which plans? In a motion?
Yeah, we've already asked for, Brookdale is on our agenda, Edgemore to Riske, Whipperwell from Edgemore to Riske. Shippala.
Shippala Park.
And.
Minkie, right? Minkie.
Not a bad key. For Wellnuts.
I was gonna say that.
Wellnuts was there. Wellnuts.
Yankee. So those were the four that we had chosen to do.
Okay, and so you would be working on plans for those specific areas?
Right.
So do we have a motion allowing Mr. Doyle to go forward with those plans?
I'll make that motion that we allow John Doyle and Associates to, what basically he just said, let's get the ball rolling.
To move forward with the plans.
That's LTAP.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For end of specifications.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
That's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Park Department report.
I just had a couple of decent updates, I guess. Oliver Waterwell and Jurling out of Mill Creek, who's done a lot of the homes here in Trail Creek, came out to the site today, the dog park, to just look at maybe if we had options to get water out there. They did say that there are hand pump options, power options, and solar powered options. He was just trying to give me a rough estimate, but he saw like low end being 3,000, high end being 7,000, give or take. And he said a lot of it would just depend on how deep they needed to go and if they ran into anything, but they're gonna send some more stuff as we're looking for next year. As he was talking about that, he did say that some of the hand pumps that they had to dig deeper to get to the water level are hard to move and that's why they're not as common anymore. And we would have to do some maintenance either by the street department or have them actually come out to make sure that it didn't freeze, just like a spigot at your house. So he recommended that we reach out to NIPSCO and see if it would cost us anything at all to actually get power run to the dog park. I reached out to NIPSCO because apparently a lot of the time they don't actually charge or not, but the specifications are way out of my league and I would defer to Mr. John Doyle and possibly Jocelyn since I know we already have power and gas with NIPSCO. They emailed over to me policy documents about site readiness, which seems to be up in engineer's alley, and then an application for service. They have an engineer draw everything up and then would tell us what it would cost to get power run out to the dog park if we wanted it. We're not in it for, like, we don't pay anything or do anything outside of the work that goes into filling the stuff out.
Okay, so if we wanna hand those to Jocelyn, we can get Mr. Doyle documents if we need from you.
Do we check into city water right there? Evergreen Plaza has city water.
They brought it up before and the well guys had said the exact same thing. They said that they've tapped in out by the beach, 50 feet away, and it's cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I think when we talked about it, when we first started talking about the dog park, going from just Pine Tree to the dog park was estimations of a few hundred thousand dollars to get accomplished.
It's not that. How much? He died. Hundred bucks a foot. What do we got? 165 feet, something like that, 200 feet, $20,000.
That's the closest.
Quite a bit more than.
Yes.
It's a lot more than.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's water in Pine Tree. The question at one point was, you know, run, which can be done? You know, run a one-inch line or something down there which to serve the dog park, which undoubtedly would. You may even have that directional board, it's gonna cost, it's gonna cost some money, but that's all it will take. If you're gonna develop the park, you need to bring in a heavy or, you know, six, I'd say at least a six-inch line, get that stubbed in there, which is gonna cost you, you know, some more money. As the park develops, you're gonna have more need for water.
So for right now, do you think that the well would be sufficient rather than spending 20,000 plus?
Well, I think probably if you're, if you're going to go with power, that, that's two, it's two things. It's the well itself, running the cost was for that, 5,000 we'll say, and then bring power in there. Well, power, pump house, then distribute throughout the park.
I think this is something we need to think a little more on.
A lot more, there's a lot to it.
Yeah.
I need to speak with you after the meeting if you don't mind hanging around.
Sure. Yeah, and that was part of it too, right? If it is pretty dark out there and things like that, so if we can reach out to NIPSCO and figure it out, it's probably not the worst thing ever to find out what it costs to get power out there, water included or not, just to kind of see what our options were. And that was kind of phase two-ish a little bit, depending on where budgets go, was getting some sort of covered structure or something that would go along with it as well. I had to talk to you since kind of the beginning, do we know how many licenses we're up to on the dog park?
Uh, 12.
12 is the next one up there, I just looked at it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought the last was 11.
So 11 in the couple?
Yes.
Let's see if it was there.
Yes, 11, so that's good.
That's great for having just started.
Yeah, especially with the winters. I had, when I was there, one day a gentleman had come up and was asking me about it and hadn't got his license yet. And I, you know, I said, hey, if you renew for this year or whatever, and I chatted with him for a little while. So I think we'll get more people as they're starting to figure it out, especially going into spring too. Do we have process in place too? I guess I meant to ask that about the actual fees. Do we need to put those anywhere? They going into a specific bucket? Are we just putting in the general funds or?
They're going into the park, which is, is in fact the general.
Yes. Perfect. So you guys had any problems out there outside of, I mean?
Not really. I mean, a few people using it, but not that I paid for it. Uh, one kind of dress, I think the other actually came in. The neighbors do wanna try to use a lot, we stay out of the box, so.
Okay. And the only, the only other thing that we had was last year, I think right before Christmas, Michigan City, the baseball tried to get that contract in. So we were trying to see if we could request that contract a little bit earlier so that we weren't getting forced to sign it like we did last year without really getting a chance to talk about it.
Yeah. Did you send something to, did you send something to them?
I think I only ever got it forwarded from you.
So you could actually email Jeremy Keenan from the Park Department?
You've been including those emails.
Yeah, I would, I would definitely, I would, if I was you, I'd get ahold of Jeremy straight up and start talking to him now because they're already started planning for that.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's what they wanted last year, but then we got it a week or two before it started and didn't have a chance to meet. That's all I got.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for, for Jim?
No, I'll just email you.
Okay.
Get this taken room.
Thank you.
I'm not going anywhere.
Thanks, Jim.
And we don't have the building inspector here. Do we have a report for planning and zoning other than?
No, I don't have nothing.
Okay. Then we'll go with the police department.
Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna try to make this a lot quicker than some of the people that were before me.
Okay, that ain't gonna happen.
Just wanted to mention Halloween, I know the weather was not the greatest, the turnout was not the greatest, but we still had, I would say, over 100 golf signal would stop by and once again, we had a great time. We did not get a chance to set up the tents because of the weather, so we actually used the inside of the concession stand and we were out there like barkers, bringing people into the backside. It was nice because they had the picnic tables, they sat there, they actually, it was kind of like a break.
So do you feel like that went better for you than using just the concession stand or?
No, because, because they don't see it.
They don't see it.
They don't see it.
So the tents are better.
Four, five, six-year-olds, you can't say, yeah, just go back there, take a right.
Yeah, no.
It's not, it doesn't work like that. So we'll have to figure out some, I like the, I like the idea of having it inside, but I also like the idea of being closer to the street where the kids can see us and having our tent, having our patch out there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because again, visibility, interaction.
Okay.
We had a great crew this year. We don't have, I don't have any numbers on the, what we went through because it was so sporadic. But we're obviously gonna do it again next year. I've got a plan, I'm working on something maybe for the Christmas season. I don't know if I'm gonna do it or not, I'll get with a couple of people and get some opinions here shortly. We, we're still in the application process, we're gonna be scheduling the exam, the physical agility here shortly. And right now, we've got the one in hold as well as there are seven additional applications. And I also, I just wanna give a shout out to Deputy Corpano. Last week, a week ago Sunday, the smoke shop in Evergreen Plaza was robbed at about 7:30 at night. Through the course of a separate investigation not related to ours, a suspect was developed and I wanna give Nick credit for building our case and probable cause was found that a rust warp was issued for a level five robbery for the suspect. So I just wanna get, make sure he gets his kudos for a job well done. He was assigned as lead investigator on that and very good job. Other than that, I have nothing.
Wow.
Gonna say what? I have so much time to fill.
Sweet.
Have you got any questions, I mean?
Anything on the cruiser?
No, I just looked at it yesterday because I was gonna send a text asking if they had heard anything and it's only been a month since we ordered it, so.
And it's.
Things happen.
Yeah, but not that, this is Dodge and talking, no? So I really don't expect it until.
February.
I was hoping December, but yeah. Unfortunately, we're not after the first of the year.
We lined up yet with the replacements? Do you go on that car? Lights, et cetera?
Yeah, we're working on that and I know we've got time for that, but yeah. It's, it's gonna be very close to what it was before because again, it's, we're only talking six months. So.
Okay.
Break this, it's the last of voice.
Okay.
The questions?
Questions?
You know, I don't know if Jocelyn's gonna bring this up. We had talked about this earlier, about Jim Switzer and where, what his hierarchy is gonna be, who he's gonna report to. I know we approved the position, but we don't know where he's gonna go. I, I think there's some things that we need to do on our end.
Agreed.
I ran it past Bill, Bob, you know, he's probably gonna be deputized by the police department. We're probably gonna give him a badge, 10 badges like this that actually says code enforcement or something to that effect on it. I don't wanna throw him out there and I'm just, I wanna plan ahead so that come January, he's not here. Now we're planning on what we're gonna do to get him ready. So I kinda need some, we need some direction from you as to where, where you want.
Where we need to go for that. Thank you.
So if you can think about that and then just let us know. If there's no objection, I'm gonna go ahead and order the badge.
I'll have the building inspector to report.
I would, yeah.
Okay. But I'll, I'll check with, what's that?
The building inspector. It makes sense that he would report to Steve and then.
Sure.
But yeah, if you wanna go ahead and.
I'm gonna double check with Steve just because I don't wanna step on anybody's toes. And this was my whole thing, it's like, this is just my personal feelings, I think he needs that. He needs those tools, he needs that, he needs the support of the town and the police department behind him.
Agreed.
So I'm gonna get some of those things taken care of for him and I'm gonna check with Steve first just to make sure I'm not stepping on his toes.
Thank you.
Okay?
Okay.
I actually do wanna say something, but I'm like.
Go ahead, say it.
Steve Thomas is our building inspector. I don't know how many ordinance violations there are, but Steve Thomas isn't, isn't here full-time. And so to have someone that he's reporting to who isn't here makes it difficult. So I personally, since I'm here every day, would recommend that he would follow under Steve because Steve is here. But this is a decision for council to make because Reeve and I would also.
He's supposed to be January 1st, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we have time if we wanna kind of kick it back and forth and come up with a good solution for the next meeting.
I understand if he follows under Steve, but Steve's gotta have the answers for him then too, that's the thing.
But we're doing it now.
Right.
The only thing we don't have is the building side, but that's, he's already connected to that side, so he knows that side. So it's kind of split, you got, and, and again, maybe this is something that we can talk about off, you know, at a later time, but you have to think about the different types of things he's gonna be enforcing. He's gonna be enforcing grasses, junk vehicles, junk. He's gonna be enforcing building code.
Right, but because this is a personnel issue, it's not really an appropriate thing to do here.
Right, that's my, that's why I say.
So we'll have to come up with that before the next meeting.
That's something for you guys to think about.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your continued support. Thank you, guys, appreciate you considering support, we really sound. I gotta say that to you.
You want a time factor on that?
So I do have a short report from Jeff Bruder from the street department, he says, hello all, just wanted to keep everyone in the loop, on the street ongoing is a leaf removal, he was not able to be at the meeting this evening because he's working at the fire station tonight. They did hit a snag with the weather and were out of commission for about 10 days, but that allowed them to fine tune some of their equipment and be fully prepared when they were able to get back out and, and start leaf removal again. They are back in full swing and they're making steady progress, said as long as the weather holds out and people continue to rake, he sees no reason that they won't finish leaf removal throughout the town. The office did a great job of informing our residents about our downtime and, and our return to removal with very few complaints. As of right now, they're shooting for December 1st as their end date for, for leaf removal. They are working on some weekends to catch up, so as long as the piles become fewer and fewer, he'll reduce his workforce and the frequency of pickup to reduce cost. If at any time we have questions, he says his door is always open. I don't know about everyone else, but I think he's been doing a pretty good job, given the unique challenges we've had with the early winter arrival.
It has gone good, but the only thing I can add onto that with, check your neighbors, ask your neighbors, let's get the leaves picked up out on the side of the streets.
Yeah, mine haven't even started falling yet.
There's a, still, I'm sorry, they're all open.
They have a starting touch, Paul.
Mine came down with quite a bit of the snow, so.
Yeah, and oak trees have not started falling.
Because once that first week, well, December 2nd loads round or 1st, that's gonna be it, we're gonna be in snow mood, no leaf pickups.
Well, I can't go shake the tree, I'm just, I'm telling you right now.
I think we have to play this by ear, and Jeff knows that we'll, we'll play it by ear, but weather dependent, and we'll continue through right now, the projected date is December 1st.
I mean, yeah, you can read the articles in the city too, they said they're gonna pick them up, because of the same thing, oak trees, picking them up until they can't pick them up.
Everyone's had the same issue, so.
They're like, permitting policies.
So weather dependent, we'll, we'll move on from there. Did you have anything from NRC this month?
No, their next meeting is that they meet quarterly, so the next one is in February, everywhere.
Okay. Alright, do we have any old business? Looks like no. Okay, so under new business, we have changing the mileage rate for travel, so this would be an adjustment to our employee handbook, to adjust the mileage rate, I don't know what it was?
45 cents.
Forty-five?
We probably need to lower, since gas went down then, huh?
And what's the current rate?
Currently, it's 58, but it fluctuates.
Okay, so the ordinance, do you have an ordinance to approve to?
We don't, we rewrite the whole thing, but I think if, if the board would amend the mileage provision for the town to a mileage rate to the current federal mileage rate as amended.
And so instead of reading just 40, 45 cents, it could say, current federal rate is amended?
Cause it fluctuates.
And I think that's a great idea.
It was amended last year, if I'm not mistaken, yeah.
Yeah, that's probably a good one.
And you can, it can be found on the IRS stack of, so.
Okay, so do we have a motion to amend the employee handbook, to read that the mileage rate is in compliance with the federal mileage rate?
And make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And none opposed? Moving on to the capital assets ordinance? Do you have the capital assets ordinance, or are you...
I do have.
Waiting for Bill?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm gonna talk about it.
It's required by the state board of accounts to have a capital assets ordinance in place, and some bill has drawn it up, he brought it to me tonight, it falls in line with our surrounding towns, and the way they have their capital assets ordinance written up, if you wanted to look at it.
Take a look.
I got a couple other copies.
Great.
There's also a policy attached with that.
This is something new.
That's approved by the state on managing the assets. So you're actually approving the ordinance and the policy?
Okay.
And the policy just came out by the state?
Yeah, it's the policy.
And they just, they just come up with it, they haven't had this for years, this is all I know.
They have not.
It's new within the last few years that they've, yeah.
But I think Josh Lee just aligns with it already, so it doesn't...
Right, we do have, with our software, we have capital assets as part of our software, but this basically just tells us, you know, gives us a little bit of guidance.
And so this would be everything that we have owned by the town?
Correct.
So we'd have to do this for every department?
Everything that we own is, unless it's been purchased or is a smaller item, is already logged in our...
So like, we don't have to do like screwdrivers, we have to do like the trucks and the big trucks?
Right, so these are a lot of little missile guns items, otherwise. All of our vehicles, all of our large equipment, that's already logged in our system.
Should be easy to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should, not yourself.
Okay. So this, so this would be ordinance number 11-2019?
Okay.
Correct?
Yes, 11-2019.
So we need a motion to accept, I'm sorry, a motion to approve ordinance number 11-2019 to adopt the capital assets policy.
Yes.
So we need a motion?
Make a motion to accept ordinance 11-2019. That's written.
I'll second.
Thank you. All approved?
Aye.
None opposed? Okay. Any other, no, no other new business on the agenda this evening, so do we have any public comment this evening?
I don't have any.
Any public comment? No? Any council comments this evening?
I believe there's somebody here that wants to speak. Did you not come to speak tonight?
Can't, you're gonna turn me on the spot like that.
Okay.
If you could tell us who you are?
I'm the one that's in the prior process right now, it's kind of floating in limbo.
What was your last name again?
Barden, B-A-R-D-E-N.
Okay.
Kind of floating in limbo at the moment, until the next, you know, batch of people take the training, I work for the sheriff's department at the moment, court house security detail, so. Come to see all you guys and kinda feel, you know, what I'm gonna be walking into, so.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for coming to the meeting. Nice to meet you. Any other comments? None. There are none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Have a nice evening, everybody.